Alright, hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Melody and Morse Pradium, Montez, Colorado. The acronym is NPAC. I am the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 26, Class 26. What did we learn in Class 25? Well, we learned that the number 25 is the divine number. Five plus two is seven. So, you know, we thank all of our viewers who were subscribing to NPAC to learn a little bit more about international law as it relates to Moors states. As Moors are starting to learn now that if you're an ipso dure Moors subject, that that means that you are a citizen of the United States of America. We're also learning that if Moors want their true sovereignty back, your sovereignty comes through your state government that you must formulate, okay? So today, we'll continue with the subject matter. And that subject matter is subject matter. We'll talk about subject matter today. And what chronological order does subject matter come in? So, before we get into that, what is the real question I would love to ask the Moors? Question, what is the name of your provincial state government? Because if you can answer that question, you can certainly tell me how to deal with subject matter. And we'll talk about that today, okay? Alright, so as we open up genuinely, we must always maintain the mission and vision. The mission and vision is to create the United States of Morocco again, right? But how do we do that? Let's be redundant. We do that with discipline. Discipline determines our destination. What discipline am I talking about? For this desire to ever come into fruition, we must have discipline. And that discipline is to create the states. All Moors have to understand that we have an obligation to our ancient mothers and fathers to fill up this entire northwest of Mexico. This latitude, excuse me, latitude longitude of this portion of northwest of Mexico, we want to fill up all of these borders as Moors states all over the place. That is the obligation of Moors. It is not the obligation of the hybrid Europeans to help us with that. It's our obligation, right? So, let's keep talking about how do we determine that? How do we acquire that, right? Here's our subject matter of the day as we start talking about forming states. We're in what, October 2021 right now? Today's subject matter and the global subject matter right now is the JAB. A lot of Moors, a lot of citizens of the United States of America, as well as other nationals around the world are all concerned about the JAB. But we must understand something. We get distracted by focusing in on the JAB itself. Moors have to start understanding that the JAB is not the problem. Because for every problem, there's a solution. What is the solution? The solution is jurisdiction. So that is what we're talking about today. How do we deal with the JAB subject matter? This is how we deal with it. Here's a solution. First things first, state status determines destiny. But we must have discipline in understanding state status. We have to form the states and put together governments, all three branches of government. But instead of getting right into subject matter, Moors need to understand what is the solution? Jurisdiction, which is starts with jurisprudence. Number one, jurisprudence equals nationality. Check the box. Number two, jurisdiction equals your Moors state. That creates the latitude longitude through your constitution, which now puts together your bylaws. Number three, proper venue. You dealing with a dispute with the de facto United States of America or the de facto United States or one of the municipal corporations from the District of Columbia called the State of, et cetera, et cetera? Then what's the proper venue to deal with a dispute, Consular Court? And last but not least, number four, subject matter. Subject matter equals the JAB, but it's still number four. Or subject matter could be, for example, or as in labor disputes. Labor being a French word, Moors have to go back and start studying about labor when talking about that. Traffic suits, that's still number four, still subject matter. Whether you're talking about the I R S, it's still number four, it's subject matter. Et cetera, et cetera. As soon as Moors get baited into talking about subject matter, as soon as Moors complain about the subject matter, immediately Moors need to go back to their first question. What is the name of your state provincial government? Because if you know the name of your state provincial government, immediately you go right into start talking about your jurisprudence, which is positive law, common law about your ancient mothers and fathers, which sets up the jurisdiction of your latitude longitude. So therefore, when you're dealing now with the so-called JAB as a subject matter, the subject matter is irrelevant. What's relevant? You gotta start with one, two, three before you ever get to number four. So when Moors are talking about the JAB, what are they really saying? They don't realize that they're tacit acquiescence. They're saying they don't have steps one, two, and three. They don't have the defense of utilizing their state sovereignty as a defense through international law. So today, we're talking about international law as it relates to protecting your state rights on what's called just cogits, which is the norms of international law. It's defined as not interrupting the norms of international law. We'll talk about that today, alright? So, Moors at home, today's lesson from NPAC is talking about how do you use your de jure state government as a defense. Moors are overthinking the process. Stop talking subject matter and start talking state, states' rights. That is the answer to the test. So let's get into that today, alright? As I've talked about in the past, what's called the Circle Seven State of Facts. Circle Seven State of Facts. Now, Moors should already have those notes. I'm not going to place them up here today. Why? You should already have those notes. Look at your notes, what are the seven, Circle Seven State of Facts, right? So through Consular Court, Consular Court can protect your sovereign rights. If you don't want to deal with the subject matter, for example, the JAB, because it's all subject matter, then what do you do to defend yourself? You now need to give the other party, state party, third state, or the United States of America being a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, you give them notice. What is a notice? Your state of facts judicial notice. What are you doing? You're giving the other party notice of what? The facts of your state. That is the answer to the test. The facts of your state, alright? So what does that look like? Moors, this is a template that Moors must start to understand and unboard through their de jure state governments. Obviously, we have the E-State flag to the left. Why? Because that's the sovereign flag. That's our delegation of authority order under a political status. The flag is a political status for your consanguine. And as Moors get to put together their provincial state government, this is where your flag, your state provincial flag will go, to the right. Why? Because all flags to the right are subordinate to the flag is to the left. So the E-State of Morocco is the mother flag. That is the E-State flag. The empire flag, the word empire is the most important word. Empire flag because the Moroccan empire is vast. So each Moors state is part and parcel to the Moroccan empire, okay? Then obviously, you got the crescent star in the middle. But right here will be your seal as an example. This is just a template, a for example, okay? Right here is where you will put your Moors state government name then Consular Court of the State. Why is that important to understand? Because this, the Consular Court is subordinate to the state. But when you read the municipal corporations' documentation of the United States, when they're sending you a suit, that suit is always telling you what department is it coming from, okay? So this is the department it's coming from, Consular Court. You're getting the foreigners, the third state's attention immediately. All the rest is above it, they may not recognize it. But you know what they do recognize? Consular Court. How you back it up? Of the state. They know that you're becoming competent when you write like this, Moors. Underneath that, you want to place a provincial state government under the existing and pre-existing sovereignty of the Moroccan empire. Why is that important to understand? So they understand, you know, the difference between a kingdom of Morocco versus the empire. Because the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is based upon the empire, not the kingdom of Morocco. That must be understood. So as Moors are dealing with subject matter, here's how you deal with it. You create what you call a case number. The Moors through their provincial state government, you create the case number. Why? Because first things first, you must understand it's demand ends and respond ends. So the demand ends and respond ends, this is not a litigation. This is what you call arbitration and mediation. You're giving the foreign state notice that you're seeking mediation or settlement or dealing whatever the subject matter is. You want a settlement. So you come up with your own case number, right? So inside the state, your state internal number will be the case number. We create our own. You want to put it probably about a 12-point font, Calibri, black font, okay? Moors, when you're at home, writing your documents, do not write them in all red color. Write them in black and white, not all red. However, Moors can choose to do whatever you want to do through their state because it's state rights. It's just my recommendation, keep it simple, alright? Here is where you will place your Moors state government name in proper noun. What's proper noun mean? Uppercase first letter, lowercase, proper noun, okay? Not all caps, that's corporation. And I would highly recommend that you don't write it in all lower case. Put it in proper noun, okay? But it's up to state rights. So I made up a fictitious name, okay? Moors at home, for example. So, when you're sending their initial notice, you want to place the state name along with the national, your Moors national. Not your ipso dure Moors subject, not your protege, not your citizen of the United States of America as a Black Moor. Not your sovereign citizen, but a Moors national who has signed their open allegiance to their state. So here I came up with a name, Aliyah Maia Il. Put that in proper noun. Exrel, the N's Legis, all caps, okay? That will be the demand ends. Why is it demanded? Because you're giving them a notice of demand, okay? Because you're looking for a settlement. Versus, here's what you, here's where you will put the name, all caps, whoever the foreign foreigners are that you're dealing with, okay? In this example, I just put down John Doe, Sarah Smith, Officer Williams, employer's company name, in case they're trying to give you the JAB as a subject matter. Governor's name. Why is the governor's name on there? Because the governor represents the other corporate state of the United States. So you have to give him notice also. Why? Because the corporation you work for is trying to give you the JAB as a subject matter. Where does that corporation get its delegation authority orders from? The county and the state that they reside in, that's their jurisdiction. So you must also give the governor notice of what? Your Circle Seven State of Facts. That way, you're on the record notifying them because you're dealing with a state versus a state dispute that happens to have other administrators as a part of that, okay? So you put the governor's name on there and the State of, whatever state jurisdiction that's the foreigners that you have a dispute with, okay, Moors? Those will be the respond ends, not defendants. Respond ends, because this is not litigation. This is notice, notice, Moors. Everybody deserves a notice first to give them opportunity for what you call redress, alright? Immediately from there, you're getting into your state of facts and judicial notice, okay? So I'm going to go over about four pages of a document that NPAC uses. This document is approximately 40 pages long. So, Moors at home, we're only going to go four pages of this, but it's a generic document, okay? Now, for Moors at home who have put together their provincial state government, their de jure, email us, notify us, because we would love an opportunity to sit down and speak to one of your heads of state and someone that's official of your state department. Whether that's your Wazir Ires, which is your prime minister, or speak to your Hajji, which is the Secretary of State of Foreign Affairs. We even speak to your judge, which is your Kazee of your government. We even, Moors, have to talk to de jure Moors state governments about these documents. So the first four pages I share with you is for Moors at home. Listen to me. This is to try to impress upon you and to try to encourage you to get into a proper, appropriate persona state. That way, you can utilize these documents. This is an NPAC study session. You must understand NPAC's position in teaching these classes is to get Moors, encourage Moors to now increase their level of degrees up to a state status. These documents are not for individual Moors. It will not help you. Why? As we're going to learn in just a minute, it discloses the Circle Seven State of Facts. So this document won't help you if you don't have the Circle Seven State of Facts. We're going to get into that. So just to give you a brief on a 40-page document, only about four pages, just to encourage Moors to put together state governments. This is how it would start off typically. Keep in mind, Moors at home, you don't have to use these words verbatim. Like I said, this is what NPAC has wrote. But this is just to encourage you that this is the direction Moors should start thinking about how to use a state to protect their rights. The demand ends contentious matter is before the competent Consular Court of the Moors state government name. That's where you would add your name. So this is what you call a placeholder, okay, Moors? It's a template. The state, on the recommendation of Hakim Hassan Bay. So I just placed any name here, this is a fictitious name. The Mufti. The Mufti is who? That's your consul general, the consul general, okay? Submission on October 1st, 2021, I just picked a fictitious date, alright? Why do we open up like this, Moors? In a letter through Consular Court? Because Consular Court has an obligation to also notify the other party that we have consul representation on behalf of our Moors national. In this example, it was Aliyah, right? And who is her counsel? Hakim Hassan Bay. Why is that important, Moors? Because we must show both the United Nations and the ICJ, as well as any other foreign nation, that we do have consul to deal with any type of mediation or arbitration, okay? That's called Consular Relations of 1963. Vienna Convention of Consular Relations, you must have consul to take care of any of the representation of your state, alright? The recommendation states that the foreign state commonly known as the United States of America, all caps, and the United States, all caps, under the guise of the State of Governor's name, employer's company name, John Doe, Sarah Smith, Officer Williams, and the respond ends. So, these names right here are fictitious names in red as placeholders, Moors. What is it saying right here? What we're doing is we're naming the parties, the respond ends, okay? Fictitious names, but the names is not on here, the fictitious is who? The United States of America and the United States under the guise of whatever state jurisdiction that's the foreigner that Moors are dealing with. The governor's name, et cetera, it's a placeholder. The respond ends, okay? Why do you put their names on there like that? You must understand, when the foreigners see these documents, when they see their name on the document, it's going to give them a moment to pause and have a cause and effect. They know we're becoming competent, Moors, because we put together a state. Now, we're speaking to them directly as individuals, as well as to their corporations. They know we're becoming competent as Moors, alright? And as administrators. At Alia, at Alia. Pronounced in different ways. What does this mean, at Alia? Here's Merriam-Webster's dictionary. What is at Alia or at Al? At Al comes from the Latin phrase meaning "and others." What does that mean? The United States of America, along with their several states, they have all their corporations listed, all different types of names, lowercase, uppercase, all case, et cetera. LLC, INC, LLP, et cetera. So when you use Alia or at Al, that means "and all other names," okay? That must be known when we use that in our documents. So I'll read the rest of the definition. It is usually styled with a period, but you will occasionally see at Al as well. So sometimes you see at Al without the period, or sometimes you put the period right there, okay? At Al, period typically stands in for two or more names, especially in bibliographical information, alright? So I just wanted to share that information with the Moors at home. So if I can have a mother's read right here, that way we can kind of break up the...
And its administrators at Aliyah is attempting to usurp Aliyah Maia Il's diversity of states' rights, political rights, human rights, and treaty rights pursued to original jurisdiction...
Pursuant.
Pursuant to original jurisdiction and proper counsel, arrangements to any dispute or application of difference regarding vaccination and labor rights.
Alright, Moors at home. So why are we listing like this? What we're letting them know immediately is according to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article 20 talks about any disputes that's dealt with through consul and Consular Court. That's when Taj Lee Bay keeps talking about the Constitution for the United States of America, Article 3, Section 1 and 2, he's talking about Consular Court, okay? Treaties, alright? So in the treaty, follow your brick road, go back to the treaty, it talks about consul, Article 20, okay? But also, Article 24 talks about application of difference. So what's an application of difference? Such as the JAB. The JAB would be considered an application of difference, okay? Because someone's submitting a document, an instrument to you as an employee telling you, you have to go and do something based upon a subject matter. That's the application of difference. You have a difference of opinion. So what creates now the balance or interpretation of what law you use? That now comes under what? Jurisdiction. So the application of difference comes under jurisdiction. Your Moors state deals with that application of difference. And how does it deal with it? Through the proper venue. The proper venue is Consular Court. So anytime there is a dispute or an application of difference, immediately Consular Court is the proper venue to deal with said subject matter, okay? So in this subject matters, vaccinations, which is really labor rights, labor. So we're really talking about labor rights. Well, what's labor rights? You can find that in what's called the Rights of Indigenous People of the year 2010. So, when you look up the Rights of Indigenous People, right? Of the year 2010, which is a declaration from the United Nations, Moors must study and establish a law. Article 17, number one, if I have a mother read Article 17?
Article 17, number one. Indigenous individuals and people have the right to enjoy fully all rights established under applicable international and domestic labor law.
Continue.
Two. States shall in consultation and cooperation with indigenous peoples take...
Specific.
Specific measures to protect indigenous children from economic exploitation...
Exploitation.
Exploitation and from performing any work that is likely to be hazardous or to interfere with the child's education or to be harmful to the child's health or physical, mental, spiritual, moral, or social development, taking into account their special vulnerability and the importance of education for their empowerment.
Number three.
Indigenous individuals have the right not to be subjected to any discriminatory conditions of labor and inner Aliyah employment or salary.
Alright. So as we can see, Moors, the Rights of Indigenous People has what you call a little bit more specifics. But Moors must understand, when you create your de jure state provincial government, it was called regarding to a sea acceptance and accession of this declaration. If you do not have a state provincial government, it's very difficult to try to enforce a declaration without that coming through the sovereignty of your state. So when Moors put together their state provincial government and now through accession, you now have this Rights of Indigenous People. Now, when you're dealing with a foreign state, you can put on the record, in addition to your treaty and your state constitution, you can quote the Rights of Indigenous People, Article 17, which is international law, alright? That's how that works. Now, we're looking at the word labor, labor, labor. Moors have to go back and do a little bit of research on what labor means under what's called the International Labor Organization of the United Nations. We'll talk about that another day, okay? Mother, if you can continue reading?
The alleged dispute or application of difference shall be administered pursuant to the...
Pursuant.
Pursuant to the... Bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship of July 18th, 1787 and September 16th, 1836 between the United States of America citizens and Moors within the Empire of Morocco. Case law, including the...
Stop. So, Moors at home, you see this? C8 Stat 44, TS 244-29, Bevins 1286. What is that? That's called codified language of the United States of America's codified language. When they look this up, it immediately brings up the Treaty of Peace and Friendship that they say on their own record is in full force. That's the only reason why we have that codified language in there as a point of reference for them. We're not using it as our defense. We're letting them know about their obligations. We already understand our obligations because we have a state provincial government and through accession, we already have certain declarations on the record. But we also let them know, here's your obligations. Moors cannot use this as a defense. It's about obligations of the foreign state. If they can't use what's called plausible denial, not knowing what the treaty is. Okay, mother, if you can continue?
Including the multilateral treaty of Madrid dated July 3rd, 1880 and the Act of El Gesteres, April 7th, 1906. For the record, treaties are the supreme law of the land with... For the record, treaties are the supreme law of the land within the dom- dominant.
Dominion.
Dominion of the. Sharifian Moorish Empire and the limited jurisdiction of the United States of America Republic. Anything in the constitution or laws of any state to the con- contrary.
Contrary.
Contrary. Notwithstanding.
Alright, thank you very much, mother. Alright, so what's happening here, Moors? What are we doing right now? NPAC is showing Moors that once you put together your state provincial government. You should start talking through the state. You're talking through the state, not as an individual, through the state. The sovereignty of the state is we, the people. The consciousness of the people, which is physical and abstract. That must be understood, so we're talking about full powers through the state. And letting another foreign state know what their obligations are. Because we're dealing with a dispute. We're trying to now let them know about mediation arbitration. Let's be in the middle and deal with this and settle this affair. So here, what are we saying? The alleged. It's alleged dispute or application of difference. We're talking treaty to them. Shall be administered pursuant to the bilateral treaty, Moors must put that in their document, bilateral treaty. Moors have to stop just saying Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Why is the word bilateral important to understand? Because bilateral talks about the parties, the parties must be known. Who are the parties to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, bilateral treaty? Morocco and the United States of America. Not the United States, that must be known, Moors cannot put United States on there as being a party. They are not a party. To the, to the treaty. They are a third state, okay? Alright. So why are these dates important, Moors? You're letting them know you're being very specific. You're letting them know how competent you are, okay? Alright, so you come down here and you say including the multilateral Treaty of Madrid. Why are you saying multilateral treaty, same thing? You're letting them know that we recognize it's the mo- ma- multilateral treaty. That there are several nations involved with the enforcement of that said treaty. It's not a bilateral treaty where only two parties can make decisions about what happens with that treaty. That treaty is about the collective nationals who signed that treaty in eighteen eighty. What else you letting them know? For the record, treaties are the supr- supreme law of the land with the dominion of the Sharifian Moorish Empire, why is the word Sharifian Moorish Empire important, Moors? Because when you read the Act of Al Jazeera's nineteen oh six. They use the word Sharifian, Moors must learn how to use this literature and change our vernacular, and our vernacular is through the pen as well. The word empire is ano- another important word. Use that word as many times you can in any instruments that you're using, Moors. Because the United States of America is trying to bait. Moors and saying they're part of the Kingdom of Morocco, which is not true. Moors are part, are part and parcel to Northwest of Mexum. And Northwest of Mexum is part of the Moroccan Empire, the Kingdom of Morocco is a state provincial government wi- within the Moroccan Empire, that must be known. Now listen to this, Moors. Well, I'll start here. For the record, treaties are the supreme law of the land within the dominion, dominionist land of the Sharifian Moorish Empire and the limited jurisdiction. The limit jurisdiction. The limit jurisdiction of the United States of America Republic. Why is that important to understand, Moors? Some Moors will say, well, why even put that on there? Here's the reason why it's on there, Moors. You must understand it's a bilateral treaty. You must name the parties. The United States of America Republic has every right to be in Morocco because of the treaty. But their right is what, protected by what? The Republic. And Moors already know. As much as the administrators of the United States Corporation. As well as the administrators of the United Nations Organization Charter. We all know the United States of America is no longer a republic. However, Moors must disclose it because we're looking for what? We're looking to do business with the other party. We must show the United Nations that we're trying to be in honor by doing business with the Republic. So the Republic is responsible being the party to speak to the Moors, because they are the true party. The de jour party is the United States of America Republic. It's important, Moors, to keep putting Republic to understand who are you talking about? You notice I did not put it in all caps. It's improper noun, Moors. Okay? So anything in the constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding, why is that important? Because the United States of America Republic's constitution. Article three, section one and two talks about the treaties. We all know their constitution, article six talks about the treaty being a supreme law of the land, what else? The constitutional laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding, guess who else has a constitution? Us Moors have a constitution of our provincial state government. So you're putting both constitutions on the record. So Moors constitution must be de jour and talk about love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. Which means it's talking about equality and looking for peace at all times. But so the United States of America's constitution. It talks about also equality and they should be seeking peace at all times. What does their constitution say in terms of searching for peace? It tells immediately in that constitution, article six. That there are judges, legislators, all of their state bodies are obligated and bound to the treaty. And anything contrary notwithstanding, that's the peace agreement. So Moors must understand constitutions are about peace, okay, as well as treaties. Let's continue. Okay, remember that, these are just placeholders in red, okay, Moors at home? If I had a mother continue to read.
Hakim Hassan Bay Mufti Council, Council General. Shall be the counsel for both Alia Maya Il.
Maya.
Maya Il. Ex rel. And it's.
Enslagus.
Enslagus.
Okay, Moors at home. Obviously, Moors at home should already know what Enslagus is. But we make sure we put that Enslagus in all caps, because that's the corporation, alright? That's your fourteenth amendment, strong. You put that in all caps and put in italicized letters. Making a distinction, okay, Moors? So your affiliation, Moors at home, should be in proper noun. Why do I say that, Moors? It states rights. As soon as in our heads we come out of jurisdiction of the United States of America to our own provincial state government. We determine what. Proper noun is versus all caps. Okay, so I know in Blackfall Dictionary talks about capitalist, uh diminutio maximum, right? But that's for their jurisdiction. What about our jurisdiction? We make up the law how we want to now describe words. How we want to spell words, okay? So it's based upon state rights. But in NPAC, we're all about the proper noun, okay? And we're about writing in black and white text. Okay, mother, so if you can continue. Take it from the top, okay?
Hakim Hassan Bay Mufti, Council General. Shall be the counsel for both Alia Maya Il, Ex rel, Enslagus. And for the sovereign jurisdiction of Moorish state government name. With the full powers of the state regarding treaties, diversities of state, diversities of constitution law, diversity of Moorish nationals, diversities of coun- consular jurisdiction, diversity of consular court, diversity of positive common law, international law, and Moroccan law with the Sharifian.
Within.
Within the Sharifian Moorish Empire and the boundaries of the de jour.
De jour.
De jour.
Autonomous.
Autonomous state.
Okay, Moors. This paragraph right here unpacks a lot. What are we doing right now? We're letting a foreign state and foreigners of that state. We're letting them know what we're for and what we're against. What is our constitution about? And what is our constitution renounce, okay? Hakim Hassan Bay Mufti, Council General, we let them know we have representation. Shall be the counsel for Alia Maya Il, Ex rel, Enslagus. And for the sovereign jurisdiction of your. Moorish state government, that's a placeholder, that's why you put your name, Moors, for your state. With the full powers of the state regarding treaties, diversity of state, diversity of constitution law, diversity of Moorish nationals, diversity of council jurisdiction, diversity of council court, diversity of positive common law, international law, and Moroccan law within the Sharifian Moorish Empire and the boundaries of the de jour autonomous state. Moors at home, must understand something. What did we just let the foreigners know? That our whites came from what? Full power of the state. It's not. It's not Alia Maya Il. Saying that she wants her individual rights. It's the Council General. Representing both Alia Maya Il and the Moorish state. But the state has the jurisdiction to deal with the other foreign state. So the other foreign state, you're telling them what? Through our Moorish state, we're using the full powers of our state regarding treaties. And the diversity of state. This is very powerful, Moors. This is what Taj Me Bay has been trying to tell us for years. Diversity of state. Diversity of constitution law, we've been learning constitution principles since Noor Dhaali and beyond. Diversity of Moorish nationals, Moorish nationals, Moorish nationals. Not if so juror Moorish subjects. Not proteges, we'll learn about that. Diversity of consular jurisdiction. Diversity of counsel court. What's the diversity of council jurisdiction? That's council relations. That's your counsel, which is Hakim Hassan Bay, that's your council jurisdiction. Then. Your diversity of counsel court, because you must be seeking. Mediation arbitration through your consular jurisdiction of your counsel, through your Mufti or your Secretary of State. Then, if that does not prevail. Then you go into counsel court to deal with the dispute, because now it's moved up to civil and criminal litigation. First you're dealing with arbitration, mediation, then litigation. This would be litigation, counsel court, alright? The counsel court can speak to directly to other foreign states, say, look, we're just looking for mediation. But they also know since this is coming from counsel court, they know what next steps are, litigation. And from litigation, fines, penalties, and confiscation, we'll talk about that. What else is important, Moors? Diversity of positive common law. They know right then and there, we're talking about our ancient mothers and fathers. We're talking about Moorish governments that we had prior to fourteen ninety-two. Then you throw in international law, why is that important, Moors? Because you're letting them know international law secures the rights of states. And the Moroccan law within the Sharifian Moorish Empire, that's Act of Al Jazeera's nineteen oh six. And the boundaries of the de jour autonomous state. Listen, Moors. De jour. What does autonomous mean? Autonomous comes from the word autonomy. Autonomy means a disconnection from the body. That means that when you create your Moor states. You're now claiming your own jurisdiction and you're getting out mentally. As well as physically with a pen. Out of the capitulation regime of the United States of America, and you're now going back to your own Moor state and you're separating from the United States of America's capitulation regime. That's the only jurisdiction they have is what they call subject matter jurisdiction or territorial jurisdiction based upon our naivety. Allowing them to control us. Because we have acquiesced, allow them to control. Us mentally, they don't control our land, they control our minds, our virtues. Okay, so once we now renounce them with our pen. Now you create a autonomous status away from the United States of America jurisdiction corporation. Now we become the sovereign de jour state of the land, the soil, okay? That's important to understand, Moors at home. This is very important right here, because we're setting them up now to let them know what our status is. Continue, mother.
For the record, Alia Maya Il is a Moor and a Moorish national per allegiance and oath and is not a naturalized citizen of the United States of America or the United States. At Al, furthermore, Alia Maya Il is not a subject or a portug- a Portuguese.
Pro- protege.
Pro- protege of the United States of. America or the United States.
Stop. Listen, Moors. For the record. Alia Maya Il is a Moor, where we get that from? Treaty of Peace and Friendship, we're using that language. And a Moorish national. Remember what I told you, Moors? The word Moor is a generic term when it comes to the Christian powers. The only way to make the distinction of what the word Moor is, now Moors must define it themselves. How do you define it? You tell them Moorish national. But what makes you a Moorish national? Because you have a Moor state. The sovereignty comes through the jurisdiction of your Moor state. Through your circle seven state of facts. We're talking about that. That is what you call the material fact, the state of fact, the fact of the state has your oath and allegiance or your allegiance and oath document of the state. That's what makes you a Moorish national, not your mirror expression out of your mouth. The document, the instrument. Is what gives you your sovereignty. Okay, for the record, Alia Maya Il is a Moor and a Moorish national per allegiance and oath and is not a naturalized citizen of the United States of America or the United States at Al. Furthermore, Alia Maya Il is not a subject or protege of the United States of America. Why is that important, Moors at home? You're letting them know that you're competent now. You're letting them know you're not a subject, because you know what subject is now. If so, you're a Moor subject, you're not a subject. You're letting them know you're not a protege, because now they know, you know what a protege is. You're telling them on the record what you're not. Because you already told them what you are, but you must also tell them what you're not, it's a state of fact. Continue, mother, from nevertheless.
Nevertheless, Alia Maya Il nor the Moor state of state government name does not waive any affirmative defense and reserves all rights to petition the due process of state dispute with the United Nations Secretary General or the com- sorry.
Compulsory.
Compulsory jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice. In the event counselor court does not prevail. All de jour state rights shall be reserved per, uh, juice con.
Just coaching.
Just coaching.
Okay, stop right there, okay? What did we just read, Moors? What are we learning, Moors? Why are we reading this, Moors? Because we're now learning about something matter, how you deal with something matter? What's the solution, what's the answer to the test? Your jurisprudence, which is your nationality, check the box. Once you check the box of nationality, you all have an obligation after that to understand what is the nation status of your nationhood or what you must use, state status, which is what? Number two, jurisdiction equals Moor state. Number three, proper venue when you're dealing with a dispute. And that proper venue is counsel court in order to deal with the subject matter. So we're talking subject matter through this document of now, now having the power of the state to deal with the subject matter, okay? Nevertheless, Alia Maya Il nor the Moor state government name placeholder does not waive any affirmative defense, what does affirmative defense mean, Moors? Affirmative defense means the United States and their several municipal corporations have Moors down as their Enslagus. Your Enslagus, your all caps name that's on that social security card, which is legally invalid. Your enslagus, your all caps name that's on that social security card, which is legally invalid. They're still using that to hold on to your body. So you must understand, it is a fact, because they're gonna say, well, we got a document that says you're still John Doe. Now you're playing, claiming to be Aliyah Il. Okay, under your, what's called your affirmative defense. It is a fact that you were John Doe, but now you're Il based upon your oath and allegiance that you signed with your state. They're gonna try to pull you back into your jurisdiction with that all caps fourteenth amendment name. You're telling them your appellation is this, so it is a fact that they have a different name. But you're saying it's Exrel now. So you're Aliyah Il, Exrel, the all caps. So in the affirmative defense, you have a right to say, I recognize that's an old name, that's old business. However, I have now pledged my allegiance and oath to a different state. That's what affirmative defense means, okay? For Moors at home, go look this up, go look it up, affirmative defense, so you get a, an understanding of what that is, okay? What that's important to put in the document, because that's what they're gonna fight over. What, what are they fighting for? What is their jurisdiction? Their jurisdiction is what? Not a Moor state, but a municipal corporate state. So they're dragging you back in, they're using these same principles, Moors. So in affirmative defense, they're saying, well, we checked these boxes too, under your straw name. You're saying, no, 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 no. That's irrelevant, because that's all based in fraud, corruption, and coercion and use of force under fraud, which is a violation of international law, okay? Let's continue. Let's start at the top, America, excuse me, nevertheless, Aliyah Maya Il nor the Moor state government placeholder name does not waive any affirmative defense and reserve all rights to petition the due process of state disputes with the United Nations Secretary General. Why is that important to say, Moors? You're letting them know you're competent, that you know, you can't go to the United Nations as an individual, you have to go as a state. And you definitely can't go as an individual saying, I'm black. You have to go and say, I am a national of the state. But the state is doing the talking for you. You now are subordinate to the state, the state represents everybody. All the nationals of the state are behind the state, the state government is this. What's next? The state, the state is government, then it's nationals, okay? So the nationals, the people are third on the list. Who's first? The political state. Who's second? The political government, the three branches of government. Who's third? The people. But the people and the state government are one. They are what you call the abstract and the physical. Understanding that's a political document that's representing them. But the government is representing them through that pen, and who is the government representing? The national, okay? So the nationals are we, the people. We, the people, are protected by the state. But who protects the state? The people. We work in unison, okay, Moors? So the state disputes with the United Nations Secretary General, that's international law, or the compulsory jurisdiction of International Court of Justice, what are you letting the foreign states know? You're letting them know, not only won't you use consul court, but if consul court does not prevail, then here's next step, United Nations. United Nations can't deal with the dispute and settle it, what's next? International Court of Justice. They know you're competent, Moors, when you talk like this. Based on what was called jurisprudence, when we looked up the definition jurisprudence, it talks about the order, the order of law. And that is the order of law, first you deal with it nationals. And through your state, you deal with consul court. Then from consul court, you take it to the UN, then the UN takes it to the ICJ, okay? Last but not least, all de jour state rights shall be reserved per just cogit. What's just cogit? So, Moors at home, look up the Vienna Convention on the Law Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine. This is Article fifty-three. So if I can have the mother read Article fifty-three?
Article fifty-three. Treaties afflicting with conflicting with a peremptory norm of general international law, just cogit. A treaty is void if at the time of its conclusion, it conflicts with a peremptory norm of general international law. For the purposes of the present convention, a peremptory form of general international law is a norm accepted and recognized by the international community of states as a whole, as a norm from which no derogation is permitted and which can be modified only by a subsequent norm of general international law having the same character.
Thank you, mother. So what does this mean, Moors? Just cogit is the norms of international law. They cannot be disturbed, it cannot be changed, Moors can't even change it. So what does this mean? A treaty is void if at the time of its conclusion, it conflicts with the peremptory norm of general international law, so everything about international law. So what happens? The United States of America is deemed the Moors as being what? Negro, black, and colored. That's a violation of the treaty. But guess what? Moors have capitulated and consented to through tac acquiescence or just plain old acquiescence to be negro, black, and colored. So there's shame on both sides. For the purposes of this present convention, a peremptory norm of general international law is a norm accepted and recognized by the international community of states. As a whole, as a norm from which no derogation is permitted. What does that mean? The United States of America nor the United States, or their several fifty municipal corporation states, nor Moor states can do anything to undermine international law. And what is international law? When we looked up the word treaty in the Black Thought Dictionary, it says it's international law. So Moors cannot undermine the treaty, and neither can the other foreign states. That's called just cogit. You must follow the norms of international law, i.e. the treaty and constitutions. Bilateral treaties and multilateral treaties, as well as all declarations made or which shall be made, will end up being the law of the land, once Moors now through their state provincial government accede to accession to have all declarations of parliers bylaws. That will become the law of the land, okay? Let's start from here, nevertheless, Aliyah Maya Il nor the Moor state of state government name does not waive any affirmative defense and reserve all rights to petition the due process of state disputes with the United Nations Secretary General or the compulsory jurisdiction of the International Court of Justice in event the consul court does not prevail. All de jour state rights shall be reserved per just cogit. You already let them know, they can undermine our orders from consul court if they want to. That won't be in of the dispute, okay? Continue, mother.
Whereas any Moorish nationals within their political Moroccan government have every sovereign human being right of equality and equal liberty to an autonomous state provincial government. For the record, Moor state government name is within Morocco Sharifian Moorish Empire, geographically located at latitude thirty-seven degrees north to forty-one degrees north, longitude one hundred and two degrees west to one hundred and nine, nine degrees west. See fact, state of facts, discovery evidence as follows.
Stop. Okay, Moors, at home, I actually should have put this in red um text as a placeholder. This, but I want to give you an example, what you place on the document is your latitude and your longitude, but that's also in your constitution. Understand, this latitude longitude is really for NPAT, like I said, I should have probably changed it. But understand, this is a placeholder where you, Moors at home, when you put together your state provincial government, look up your latitude longitude, that should be in your constitution anyway, alright? So you're letting them know what the latitude longitude is, okay? Then you say, see state of facts, discovery evidence as follows. Now what are you doing? Now we're about to get into the exhibits, i.e. discovery documents, then everything you just said is backed up by these exhibit documents, okay? Alright, mothers, hope you can start right here.
See state of facts, discovery evidence as follows. Exhibit A, Constitution, see exhibit B, state seal. See exhibit C, state flag. See exhibit D, Morocco Empire flag. See exhibit E, allegiance and oath agreement. And see exhibit F, inauguration video per the link.
Stop. Thank you, mother. Now, what did we just do, Moors? Keep in mind, this is the circle seven state of facts. This right here is exhibit A, one, two, three, four, five, six. What's the seventh one? The actual document we're reading. So it ends up being seven documents total. The state of facts and judicial notice is actually the seventh document, but when you submit it to them, it'll be the first document they'll see, followed by the exhibits, alright? Now you're putting on the record, okay? Keep in mind, Moors, when you send these documents, you attach all seven documents, all circle seven state of facts, judicial notice along the other six documents, total seven, okay? You attach the documents in an email. You also put all of this inside of your envelope when you send it physically, okay? All these documents. So when the governor of the municipal corporation of the all caps state, which are the foreigners, receive these documents, they cannot claim plausible deniability, they're gonna email it and mail it, okay? Okay, mother, if you can um read from here, effect.
Effect of establishment of political self-determination secures the rights of Moorish nationals thereon. Effect to appropriately mitigate any dispute or any differences concerning civil matters and criminal matters. Effect reaffirms rejections of discrimination, molestation, extraterritorial jurisdiction, compulsory jurisdiction, or capitulation regime within our sovereign jurisdiction regarding but not limited to any alleged forced vaccinations or labor rights within the latitude and longitude of the de jour state.
Okay, Moors, at home, thank you, mother. What do we say when we say the word effect? We're saying that what we said previously, aforementioned, the effect of what we told them about these exhibits, what's gonna be the cause and effect? Remember Taj Sri Baye said, pretty soon it'll just be cause, we won't be the effect. What does he mean when he say that? Because usually, we always are reacting to their action. Now, we are the ones who letting them know on the record what our status is, and now they can respond to us. We are the cause, and they will be affected by our cause through these state of fact documents, okay? So we say, effect, what's the effect of what we just aforementioned? On establishment of political self-determination secures the rights of Moorish nationals thereon. Effect to appropriately mitigate and dispute or any differences concerning civil matters and criminal matters. What are we saying? Even though this may be an application of difference, still, any civil matters and criminal matters are dealt with now through consul court, we're letting them know that this subject matter about vaccination might be the subject matter, but all subject matters will be dealt with from here on, thereon, through our state government. Effect reaffirms rejection of discrimination, molestation, extraterritorial jurisdiction, compulsory jurisdiction, or capitulation regime within our sovereign jurisdiction regarding but not limited to any alleged forced vaccination or labor rights within the latitude and longitude of the de jour state. Now I put this here as a placeholder, Moors, because this is a change as you use, you plug and play with these documents. The subject matter is this, but the subject matter could be anything, so it's a placeholder, okay? So that's why Moors must understand, the word effect means, everything we did prior to, I'm, you now saying effect, this is gonna affect them, the foreigners, according to the Act of Al Jusseris. Article one oh two talks about the foreigners, okay? Continue, mother.
Effect, the de jour state of Moorish state government name have accepted the accession to, but not limited to, the Treaties of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six and the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty and the Act of Al Jusseris nineteen oh six, et cetera, pursuant to post-laminium political rights of indigenous Moorish nationals in North America located within the Sharifian Moorish Empire. The de jour, de jour state shall enforce its capacities and incapacities as the foreign modern state and the rights of indigenous peoples.
Okay, thank you, mother. Let's go back, read, okay. Effect, remember what I said, effect means, because of these circle seven state of facts judicial notice, here's the effect, alright? Our cause is going to affect them. Effect, the de jour state of Moor state government name placeholder have accepted the accession to, but not, but not limited to the Treaties of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six, and the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty and the Act of Al Jusseris nineteen oh six, et cetera, pursuant to post-laminium political rights of indigenous Moorish nationals in North America. Why is this post-laminium political rights important to understand? You must understand, all treaties, constitutions, declarations, et cetera, are political documents. They're just instruments with a pen. Your consanguinity, your birthright is your birthright. However, how do you secure your birthright? With the pen, all instruments, all contracts are political in nature. But your jurisprudence is your jurisprudence, your nationality is your nationality. Everybody's entitled nationality, however, once you claim a nationality, you're obligated to now understand jurisdiction of that nationality, and through that jurisdiction, putting together Moor state to secure your rights, et cetera. When Moors say, I have a nationality, you're merely saying on the record that you're incompetent if in fact, you don't take the next steps. We must all be competent through discipline to understand. Soon as you claim to be a Moor, that comes with a lot of responsibility. Moors created the human being race on planet Earth. We created Moor science on planet Earth. We even created the Albion on planet Earth. You must understand, as soon as you say you're a Moor, that comes with a lot of obligations. So Moors must understand, as soon as you say you're a Moor, you gotta hit the books, which books? Start understanding international laws that relates to statehood. Or we will be deemed incompetent if we say we're Moor, we're still in the jurisdiction mentally of the United States of America, I mean, we don't really understand what Moor means. We're still allowing them to identify it on a generic term as soon as we don't create the Moor states. So as soon as you put together your post-laminium, what does that mean? After you've been conquered, now you're making a claim on the Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, you're making your claim that's validated by the consul. Who's the consul validating it? Your Moor state. In constitution, what makes the claim? Not you as an individual. The trust, what's the trust? The constitution is the first trust. Then you put together your national trust, which is another political document, but that's a private document on behalf of your state. What's the public trust? The constitution of your Moor state. Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. But it's the rights of who? Indigenous Moorish nationals. Where? In North America, located within the Sharifian Moorish Empire. Why is that important Morse? Act of Al Jusarras nineteen oh six talks about the Sharifian Moorish Empire. Empire, empire, that's an important word to understand Morse. The de jour state shall enforce its capacities and incapacities as a foreign modern state and the rights of indigenous people. Why do I say foreign modern state? Because all states are foreign to other states. So if you have a Moor state of your nationals, it's still foreign to all other states regardless. Even when other Mores put together their provincial state government or their state, and we have a provincial state government of our state, when Mores have two separate states. If Morse put together a state right here, in this jurisdiction of Moor state, it will still be foreign to NPAC state, because it's your state rights. So Moor states, when we put them together, they're equal, but separate because of state rights. State rights will always be protected and secured based upon your individual constitution. That's what makes it foreign, because you're not signing an oath and allegiance to the state. So this state is not signing an open allegiance to this state, which immediately makes us foreigners of each other, but yet we're what? Equal, but separate, because of the constitutions. But our nationality is still Moor, that's what makes us family. Alright? Okay. Okay mother.
The United States of America Republic and the United States Limited Jurisdiction over its citizens are based on bilateral treaties. Most favored nation multilateral treaties and constitution. Meaning of dispute in Treaty of eighteen thirty-six between Morocco and the United States is applicable to criminal and civil matters. The meaning of difference is applicable to all other matters of application. Any vaccination or labor matters shall be deemed a civil dispute between the parties.
Alright, stop. Okay Morse. This must be redundant. But Morse, you write your, your, your instruments through consul court. The United States of America Republic, that's important to understand Morse, you're making a distinction. They know you're making a distinction. They don't like that distinction, because they know they're not the republic, but the parties must be known. And the United States Limited Jurisdiction, Limited Jurisdiction over its citizens. Why is it Limited Jurisdiction? Because they're a corporation. Plus, they sign a treaty of peace and friendship, which is a term of fifty years. They're not permanent. It's unlimited, because the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article twenty-five, says it's for fifty years. And since the treaty is enforced as of today, we're in the year twenty twenty-one, that treaty comes to an end in the year twenty thirty-six. It must be negotiated one year in advance, twelve months in advance, in the year twenty thirty-five. So the United States of America Republic only have fourteen more years to get their act together at best. Because within the next fourteen years, this is what's going to happen. There's no question about it. It's not if, it's just when. When? When Mores become disciplined, study international law. Back to point. The United States of America Republic and the United States Limited Jurisdiction over its citizens, over its citizens only. Well, who are their citizens? If so, draw more subjects. As well as anybody else who capitulates or consists of being a citizen of the United States of America. And based on bilateral treaties, most favored nation clauses, multilateral treaties, and constitutions, meaning of dispute in Treaty of eighteen thirty-six between Morocco and the United States is applicable to criminal and civil matters. The meaning of differences is applicable to all other matters of application. Any vaccination or labor matters shall be deemed a civil dispute between the parties, what's happening? So, vaccination of labor is typically an application of difference. But this last sentence is letting them know through consul court, consul court is now making a civil dispute. Why are we making a civil dispute? Cause you're disputing over whose jurisdiction gets to make the choice about said subject matter. It becomes a civil dispute under common law. Common law of the nationality of the original jurisdiction of Mores. So immediately on the jurisdiction of your Moor state, since it's going through consul court, the proper venue of consul court, consul court can now say, now this is a civil matter, because now it's in the hands of consul court. What's that mean? That means that the consul on behalf of your Moor state has failed in trying to now communicate with the foreign state. Your movie or your secretary state, your, your, your minister of foreign affairs through communication correspondence has already told the foreign state, hey, I'm a Moor. You put some things on the record already, hey, I'm a Moor of my, my, of my Moor state. They already, your employer should already have this information. So now if they come back and say, oh, you gotta take the jab. Oh, you ain't listening. It immediately becomes a civil matter, because they've already been informed of your status. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. So immediately, this matter shall be deemed a civil dispute between the parties now. Why? Because before all this subject matter started, you had already told them your status. So if they're still trying to now undermine your status, it immediately became a civil dispute. Okay? That must be understood Morse, why this last sentence? Any vaccination or labor matters shall be deemed a civil dispute between the parties. It's no longer just an application of difference, it's civil now. Okay mother.
Reaffirming the United States of America Republic, nor the United States does not have capitulation jurisdiction in the dominion of Morocco over Moorish nationals that poses a constitution.
Possesses.
Possesses a constitution and state sovereignty per international law and the rights of indigenous people.
Stop. Reaffirming. Reaffirming. What does that mean? That means Mores have the obligation to have already notified their employer that they're a Moor. Soon as you notify your employer that you're a Moor, you're immediately letting them know that you fall under what's called the International Labor Organization, because now you are a foreigner, foreigner working in their jurisdiction. You come under different laws. But instead of them studying international law, they immediately treat you like you're just a citizen of the United States of America, no matter what accent you have. So as soon as you notify them that you're a Moor on the record, now all of a sudden you have a subject matter dispute. You're letting them know immediately, I'm reaffirming. Cause I already affirmed with you the first time. I affirmed through my documentation when I gave it to my employer the first time. Now I'm reaffirming. The United States of America Republic, nor the United States does not have capitulation jurisdiction in the dominion of Morocco over Moorish nationals that possesses a constitution and state sovereignty per the international law and the rights of indigenous people. What did I just do? What did consul court do, I should say? Consul court's putting on the record with a foreign state and their administrators, we're not talking about trying to enforce a treaty as an individual. Cause treaties cannot be self-executed. Now you're speaking the proper literature and vernacular through a pen, letting them know that the state is enforcing the rights of their national. We're talking now how all states around the world communicate with each other through the state. Continue mother.
Reaffirming the United States of America and the United States relinquishment and renunciation, renounce a reclamer, renounces claiming must be regarded as an out and out. Renunciation, excuse me. Of the thank you, of the capitul-
Capitulatory.
Capitulatory rights and privileges by the United States of America and the United States Extraterritorial Jurisdiction and Counselor Jurisdiction in nineteen fifty-six in the land of Morocco.
Stop. Okay. As we're starting to wrap up. Let's read again. Reaffirming the United States of America and the United States relinquishment of the renunciation, renounce a reclaimer. What is that? That's a French verb. If you go back and study France versus the United States of America, this terminology is used, which means renounces claiming must regarded as an out and out renunciation of capitulatory rights and privileges by the United States of America and the United States Extraterritorial Jurisdiction and Counsel Jurisdiction in nineteen fifty-six in the land of Morocco. What happened in nineteen fifty-six Morse? That's when the President of the United States of America put on the record through a pen, they relinquished extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco. In Morocco. In Morocco. So what are we doing now Morse? As we start wrapping up? We're now quoting their obligations. We're not using it as a defense. We're quoting their obligations, reminding them, you're obligated to your own statutes, constitution, as well as Mores have their own constitution, because we're putting constitution on the record. We're putting bylaws on the record, both states are. So how do you deal with the dispute? Cause you're talking jurisdiction? Proper venue consul court would deal with the dispute, if in fact, the United States of America said, yeah, we relinquished jurisdiction, but as soon as they say the but, no worries, we know how to deal with that. Consul court. But there will be a but, or they will acquiesce by not answering you at all. Okay? Alright, so. As we wrap up, we're gonna read this last paragraph, as Mores are familiar with the public law of the United States of America, put on the record the, the following. Continue mother, right here.
See the eighty-fourth Congress of the United States Second Session as follows. Quote unquote, public law, Morocco, US Consular Jurisdiction. Joint Resolution Approving the
Relinquishment.
Reliquen- relinquishment of Counselor Jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco, August first nineteen fifty-six, page seven fifty-three.
Okay, so we'll get it there. So, this is page four of a possibly a forty-page document Morse. I want to give Morers at home an opportunity to understand that NPAC has put together a forty-page document of utilizing the sovereignty of your state to deal with any subject matter. Morse must understand. If you're worried about subject matter, that means you don't understand the power of the state. And any Moor who does understand the power of the state, understands how to deal with subject matter. So if Morers start to onboard their states, we would like for Morers to reach out to get an understanding. That we will share information about this forty-page document with de jour Moor state governments. Why is that important to understand Morse? Because NPAC study session, it would be an oxymoron. If we just said to individual Morers, yeah, use these documents. Then that would undermine the movement of people who are using discipline to put together more states, okay? So for Morers at home, as we continue the same subject matter, we'll pick up on this again in the next NPAC study session, of how you deal with this same subject matter of the jab. But understand Morse, let's go back to the beginning. Your state's status determines the destiny, the destiny of what? The subject matter. How do you deal with the subject matter? Understanding jurisprudence equals nationality. Number two, jurisdiction equals Moor state. Number three, proper venue equals consul court, then you get into subject matter. If Morers can check these first three boxes, the subject matter will not be a problem. Alright? I end with that.